Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 15, 2011, meeting of the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority and the Edina City Council. Rule call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett.
Here.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Sprague.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. The timing was perfect there. For those of you in the audience that had a chance to pick up an agenda and take a look at it, you'll see that certain items are marked with an asterisk. Those are items all handled on a single motion basis as consent agenda items. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda, Member Swenson?
Three E.
Three E. Very good. Anything else? Okay. With the exception of three E, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved and seconded we approve the balance of the consent agenda other than three E, which we will move to the main agenda discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. All right, we have... Let's see. Thank you. A proclamation that we do not have any business for the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority this evening, but we do have a Teen Art Month proclamation, and I'm going to read that proclamation, and the council will adopt it, I'm sure. And Teen Art Month proclamation reads as follows: Whereas Young Eyes, a teen self-portrait art show, February 24 through March 23, 2011, will showcase the collaboration of the Edina Art Center and Edina High School and celebrate the art of teens in our community. And whereas through art education, gallery exhibits, and outreach programs, the Edina Art Center increases the quality of life in our community. And whereas engaging in the arts has long been proven to enrich lives and provide positive benefits for both physical and mental health in teens. And whereas Teen Art Month will increase knowledge of how the arts improve self-esteem, appreciation of the work of others, self-expression, cooperation with others, and critical thinking skills, skills vital to the future success of our leaders. And whereas Edina has a large population of youth, more than 7,500 students of all ages are involved in art activities at the Edina Art Center, and thousands of viewers, many of whom are teens, enjoy public art exhibits throughout the community. And whereas teens who connect with the arts can better articulate their own perceptions and form coherent responses to their experiences, now I, James B. Hovland, Mayor of the City of Edina, do hereby proclaim March 2011 as Teen Art Month in Edina. Is there a motion to adopt the Teen Art Month proclamation?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, we adopt the Teen Art Month proclamation. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And I see someone... I thought I saw someone there. Anybody here to accept the proclamation? Bill? Oh, yeah. Folks want to come forward? And I will just hand this to you. Jennifer, did we need to do anything else? Was there... Want photos, or... All right. No?
All right, Bill, you sit down.
Okay. You can have a seat.
Okay. You can have a seat.
Thank you. There we go.
Okay. Big smiles. Good. And one more. Okay. Very nice. Thank you.
Do you like to comment about this Teen Art Month? Have you come up to the podium since you can identify yourselves and just go into your quick comments so we can know who you are and understand why you're involved with the Art Center?
Okay. Well, hello. I am Maria DePisa, and the Art Month and our art show, it's so exciting because it's all teens, and we get to show teen art and show what the teens in Edina can do, because I think that they're a little bit pushed under when it talks about art, but it shows that they are really talented as well as adults, so it's really cool that we got to include them in.
Thank you.
Hello. I am Justin Moran, and I've also been working on the Young Eyes Art Show with Maria. It's just, this is an art show that's really cool because it's displaying all the work that kind of gets not thrown under the bus but isn't necessarily exhibited at Edina High School. So this just shows all the work of all the kids who not necessarily have shown their work before.
Well, good. Thank you, Justin.
My name is Nicole Mills-Novoa, and I've been working with the teen council and kind of teaching them how to orchestrate, organize, and curate an exhibition, and this has been an awesome opportunity for them to learn kind of the behind-the-scenes of what happens at an exhibition, and it's also been a fantastic opportunity where the community has come together to put together sponsorships. We have the MIA and the Walker involved as jurors. So for Edina teens to have the opportunity to be in an exhibition that is well-curated, well-judged, and well-sponsored, it's an excellent opportunity, and I'm so proud to work with these guys because they are so committed, so excited, and so with it. It's an honor. Thank you so much for declaring this month Youth Art Month.
Thank you. Thanks, Nicole. Thanks, Justin. Thanks, Maria.
Thank you.
All right. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is the 2011 Community Development Block Grant Matter, and Joyce Repia from our Planning Department is going to handle this matter, which is what she usually does every year.
It's that time of year again. Seems like we were just here. Thank you. Mayor Hovland and members of the council... I'm sorry. The CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Program, is a federally funded program administered by HUD, who in turn charges Hennepin County to oversee the distribution of funds to its communities. These funds are to be directed toward improving housing opportunities and providing a suitable living environment for persons with low and moderate incomes. Edina's 2011 allotment is $173,786. Projects which may be funded with the CDBG monies are either public service or community development-related. As in years past, funding for the public services may not exceed 15% of the budget, which means $26,067 is available to assist the following agencies who have applied for funding. Senior Community Services Home or Housing and Outdoor Maintenance for the Elderly Program provides housekeeping and chore services to Edina seniors who pay for services on a sliding fee scale. They are requesting $17,789. Community Action Partnership for Suburban Hennepin provides full-cycle homeownership services ranging from first-time homebuyer assistance and housing rehabilitation to foreclosure prevention counseling and loan assistance. They are requesting $5,624. And Home Line provides tenant advocacy services for Edina renters facing critical housing situations with landlords' foreclosures, as well as situations that threaten their housing security. They are requesting $2,654. Edina's Human Rights and Relations Commission has reviewed the requests from these public service agencies, and they support the program's funding. After the public service distribution, the remaining 85% of the $147,719 remains to be directed toward community development projects. Staff recommends directing $65,719 of these funds to the ongoing Rehabilitation of Private Property Program, which provides deferred repayment loans of up to $30,000 to make structural improvements to owner-occupied, single-family homes. Eligibility for the program is based on a household's income established by HUD. The remaining $82,000 is recommended to go toward West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust's Homes Within Reach Community Land Trust Program, which will assist them to purchase a seventh land trust home in Edina, reinforcing the city's commitment to providing affordable housing opportunities in the community. Representatives for the requesting agencies are here this evening to answer any questions you may have, and I, too, would be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Question for Ms. Repia?
No.
Member Swenson?
Roger, I serve on the Board of CAPH, and while it's an unpaid service, is it appropriate for me to vote on this since funding for them is within this and it's not separated out?
Assuming you're not... Are you paid by them?
No.
I assume I know the answer, but confirm that. Then you don't have a financial interest that disqualifies you from serving.
No. Nor have I ever been serviced by any of these agents.
So the answer is you can vote if you choose to.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Questions for Joyce?
I do.
Yeah. Member Bennett, I've got a few, too. You go ahead.
Okay. Ms. Repia, we've been hearing in the news about budget cuts that will include this kind of funding. What is the potential impact on the discussion we're having this evening of these proposed cuts?
Well, the final budget will be released from HUD in May, and there has been a letter circulating from mayors, you know, all the way, the state government, requesting that for the fiscal year 2011 budgeting maintain what at least the 2010 budget was, which would be exactly what you have before you tonight. So we're hopeful that when they do come up with a final budget, that it will reflect the funding that we had in 2010.
If it does not, are programs able to go forward? How...
Well, these are for... The funding that you're looking at today, these funds will start in July, and they have an 18-month cycle with which they need to spend it. So I'm not foreseeing that the funds will end in May. However, if they are reduced, there is, within the resolution, the ability for the city manager to direct us to adjust the budgets to reflect either the reduction or an inflation.
And this may be a question for one of the other presenters, but what other cities are part of the land trust, the West Hennepin Land Trust?
Well, I think Janet Linbo is here, the executive director of West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust, and I'm sure she'd be more than happy to share with you about their activities in other communities.
And then one more general question, and that's how are the services publicized to Edina residents?
Well, they are publicized through our About Town. We do advertise those services. The Edina Resource Center, too, is very active in getting the word out. Whenever they receive a letter or a phone call from somebody in need of services, that's really the go-to list, so it starts with them, you know, just getting the word out. And then naturally, whenever they call the city, we, too, direct them to those phone numbers.
Couple of things, Joyce. I want to hand this to you. I got this by email today from the U.S. Conference of Mayors talking about the fiscal year 2012 proposed budget cut of 7.5% on CDBG. You should have that for your record so we can be thinking about a strategy there. Elizabeth Kouts, the mayor of Burnsville, who is the present president of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, has written a letter to the president asking his consideration or reconsideration of making any CDBG cuts for fiscal year 2012. So that's something you should be aware of. And then you'll go back to the podium. I've got a couple of questions for you as well. So on the public services portion of the proposal, we've got Home, CAPH, and Home Line. Those are all Human Rights and Relations Commission reviewed and approved...
Correct.
...proposed expenditures of CDBG money.
That is correct.
And then when we move to the community development side of it, who reviewed that? Or was that an internal staff review?
That's internal staff review.
All right. So when you make this recommendation to the council, and I take it you're the staff person that's recommending these allocations?
Yes.
How did you go about making a determination as to what you would recommend with respect to the amount proposed for the Rehabilitation of Private Property Program and West Hennepin Land Trust?
Well, historically, $82,000 has been the amount of money that Walt has needed to assist them in purchasing their homes through the Community Land Trust Program, so the Rehabilitation of Private Property Funds was then what was left over after the $82,000.
And we know that they have spelled the right amount of money, that it's not more or...
From... For Walt?
Mm-hmm.
That is correct. That's what they have requested.
And that's... Member Swenson was going in the same direction I was going, is how do we know that Walt doesn't need more money to be doing their work in Edina? And how do we know that the Rehab of Private Property Program, you know, how do we know that needs $26,000? What's the balance in that account?
In the Rehabilitation of Private Property...
Yeah, the Rehabilitation of Private Property Program.
Well, it's hard to tell you exactly what the balance is because the funds are not... They're promised, but they're not spent because we've got homeowners who have just started in the program. They don't know how much their rehabilitation is going to be for their home, so we need to have funds.
Okay. So you've made your best estimate of what you'll need in that account to help some folks in our community?
That's correct.
With some rehabilitation efforts on their property?
That's correct. And historically, this is the amount of money that has held the program steady.
All right. Good. That's helpful. Member Swenson?
The Home Line Tenant Advocacy Services originally said in here that they were able to have some seminars on renters' credit and how as a renter you are a responsible renter, and that recently with our school district, they haven't been able to. And I guess I would say that I would be committed to put that on the agenda when we meet with our school board later on, because having experienced children leave, go to college, and I don't care if 90-some percent of Edina kids go to college, usually by the second year of college, they're renting somewhere, and usually some parent has lost their last month and first month rent in their child's thing three years in a row. So to me, it has a huge value for going on, and especially since more people are building apartments and it's because more people are renting. So I would be an advocate for trying to get that program back in the high school because I think it has a huge value. So I'd just like to state that going in, because my expectation would be is if we fund that, that that program could be able to start back up again.
Member Swenson, when we received the application, I did contact Val Burke with the Edina Resource Center, who has contact with the school district, of course, and she was making those connections to make sure that there is somebody, but I think it's an excellent point to bring up.
That's just another opportunity that we have when we meet with our equals on the school boards and say, hey.
This is a priority.
Make use of this.
Yes.
Good. Any other questions or comments from Ms. Repia? All right. We'll open up the public hearing, and is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come up and inquire or comment regarding this proposed allocation of CDBG funds? Welcome.
Hello. I'm Kitty Ingwell. I live in Rosemont, Minnesota, but I work in Bloomington. And Mayor Hovland and council members, I want to thank you for past funding for our program, Home. And Home is a part of Senior Community Services. Senior Community Services has been around 60 years now, serving seniors with different programs like ours. Home itself has been serving the seniors in Edina for 30 years, so we've been around a long time also, and hope to stay around a long time. I'm the program director, and I've been with the program 12 years, so I've had a lot of time to get to know people in different cities, and hopefully we'll continue to do a good job for this program. We serve the seniors in Edina with different chores that they're no longer able to do for themselves. Our homemakers help clients who are unable to get down on the floor and scrub the floor and don't have, maybe don't have the stamina to clean out the refrigerator or to vacuum their carpet. We hire independent contractors to mow lawns and shovel snow, and this winter was particularly busy with a lot of people helping us with the snow removal. We will be partnering again this year with volunteers from churches and schools and corporations who will help seniors with lawn cleanup and window washing. Last fall, we coordinated with Your City to help on Edina Community Service Day. We helped to match clients with volunteers from the Energy and Environment Commission. And I have a thank you card from one of the residents who received this service. I'd like to read that to you real quickly. It's very short. She's writing to Dear Debbie and Marilyn, who are program coordinator and program assistant, "A very belated thank you to you for the great help you have organized for us this year. I've just finished writing thank yous to all the workers. We thought you might like pictures of the group, as you don't get to see that part of your effort. Energy Day was amazing. They weatherized our doors, blanketed our hot water heater, and replaced almost all of our old-fashioned light bulbs. Thank you again." So it was a good opportunity for one of our clients and for the city. We also have worked with the Edina Inspection Department to repair and paint a home that had been sighted this fall, and we're going to do some more work there when the weather warms up. We have expert handieman to do small repairs for clients and painters that keep the houses of Your City looking fresh with new paint. In 2010, we increased the number of clients served and the number of hours served from the previous year, and we hope to continue to be an active part of helping seniors in Edina. I'd like to give out our phone number in case anyone is listening. Our number that they can call for Edina is (952) 888-5530 to get the Home program.
All right. Member Swenson?
One of the questions I think the mayor asked is how do you get names? And you have a relationship with Val Burke at the Edina Resource Center, and then if, besides that, if that's what you have, what other ways do you think our residents find you?
They find us through the senior centers, and also if they've already been a client, they receive a newsletter every spring and fall, asking them to sign up for the chores that they've had in the past. To get new clients, we do a lot of legwork, and that is talking to churches and different corporations in the community, not only recruiting volunteers, but also to let them know about our service so that people that are elderly in those churches or even in corporations or people they might know could have that service.
Kitty, let me ask you. You said service demand was up. In fact, service was up for you in 2010 versus 2009, I take it. What percent was that up, service demand?
I don't know the percent, but I can give you the numbers.
Please. I think we'd all like to know how many Edinas you've served and how many hours were committed to service in Edina.
Right. Okay. In 2009, we served 140 unduplicated clients with 8,891.75 hours. In 2010, we served 146 clients and one, excuse me, 3,253 hours.
Okay. Other questions for Kitty? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming out this evening. Anyone else?
I'm Bill O'Meara. I'm with Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin. I'm a housing rehab specialist, and we want to thank Mayor Hovland and the council and the city for their continued support. In this past year, 2010, we worked with five people from Edina on first-time home-buying workshops. We worked with 20 people in the lines of foreclosure prevention. In rehab maintenance, I assisted one family. A lot of it gets referred to Joyce. We do have some additional money we leveraged this year that is available for small grants that we've notified the cities about from the Bremmer Bank Foundation, the Minneapolis Foundation, so sometimes our other stuff is made available as well. We counseled three people with reverse mortgages, which are for the seniors. We also administer the Energy Repair... I'm sorry. Energy Assistance Program, of which 372 people in Edina took advantage of that. And in conjunction with that, four furnaces were replaced through that program, and one major furnace was repaired. So that's kind of where we are this year, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions for Bill?
Well, I know as an agency, they need the money, so I'll put in a plug for CAPH.
All right. Thank you. And we're very frugal with it.
Member Bennett?
To repeat the question you asked earlier and just to provide another way for people in the community to know how to reach you, how do people find you and how do they reach you to request services?
We do advertise in community newspapers. City newsletters sometimes refer people to us. There's the MHFA. If they call into them, they get referred here because we're the HUD-approved counseling agency for suburban Hennepin.
And what does that acronym stand for?
Which one?
MF.
I'm sorry. Minnesota Housing Finance Association. That's a state finance agency that makes first-time homebuyer loans and programs. I also do some first-time homebuyer teaching as well, portion of that.
And what's a phone number that we can give people?
(952) 933-9639 is the general number.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Mayor and council members, I'm Janet Linbo with Homes Within Reach. I'm pleased to be here again, and first of all, thank you for your support of the Homes Within Reach program. As Joyce said, we've completed our sixth home and looking forward to moving on with seventh, eighth, and ninth in the future. I heard a couple of questions, so I'd like to respond to that before you can ask me some more questions. First of all, we're in 11 communities, and we began in 2002, and it started... Our historical antecedence goes back to the city of Minnetonka, and we have grown in the last several years to 11. And where we are, if you'd like me to name them, I have to do it alphabetically so I can remember them. Brooklyn Park, and that's probably our newest community that we're in right now, of course, Edina, Eden Prairie, Golden Valley, Maple Grove, Minnetonka. I hope I don't forget any here. St. Louis Park, Richfield, Wayzata, and Deep Haven. Did I get up the 11? Close, huh? Isn't that awful? Aging does that to you, doesn't it? The other question I heard was, is $82,000 a good representation of what you need? And that's a really good question. And I really used that number based upon our performa. And the performa is based upon the products or the real estate market in that specific community that we serve. What we found in Edina is land costs have not devalued at all. They've stayed or they've gone up significantly. Our improvements with the home piece, which we define as the improvements by an appraisal, we've seen a little bit of fluctuation in that. Anywhere throughout the 11 communities from 5 to 30%, probably here in Edina, I've seen maybe a change of 5 to 10%, but I've had more... We've had more rehab to do because more homes that we've bought in the entry-level position have needed more rehab because they haven't been able to maintain their home, so it really washes out. The other piece is looking at where everyone was with funding and where the economy was, and I knew what you receive in CDBG. I didn't want to go beyond the amount that was fair for servicing and awarding other ser... Close, huh? Isn't that awful? Aging does that to you, doesn't it? The other question I heard was, is $82,000 a good representation of what you need? And that's a really good question. And I really used that number based upon our performa. And the performa is based upon the products or the real estate market in that specific community that we serve. What we found in Edina is land costs have not devalued at all. They've stayed or they've gone up significantly. Our improvements with the home piece, which we define as the improvements by an appraisal, we've seen a little bit of fluctuation in that. Anywhere throughout the 11 communities from 5 to 30 percent, probably here in Edina, I've seen maybe a change of 5 to 10 percent. But I've had more, we've had more rehab to do because more homes that we've bought in the entry-level position have needed more rehab because they haven't been able to maintain their home. So it really washes out. The other piece is looking at where everyone was with funding and where the economy was. And I knew what you receive in CDBG. I didn't want to go beyond the amount that was fair for servicing and awarding other services because, for example, we use the cash program tremendously. They're one of our greatest agencies for referral. And then the last question I heard you ask is, how do people know about our communities? Really good question. This year, this past year in 2010, we brought on a networker with the support of Hennepin County, and it really has helped us. We've been able to participate in the Edina, a collaboration of, we work with Val and we work with the collaboration. We also provide presentations for agencies and organizations. We also do flyers, and that's a huge thing. Flyers in grocery stores, in coffee shops, those kinds of things is really, really critical. But probably our best referral is our homeowners, our homeowners that live in the community and talk to other community members or family members. And that's probably our number one. And our number is (952) 401-7071. And we always look for opportunities to grow in getting the word out about the organization. We're small and we're grassroots, so if you have any suggestions, we're surely open to those. Thank you.
Janet, hold on a minute, please. There may be some folks that have questions for you. So I'm going to let you have a chance to give a plug here if no one has any questions. But anybody have questions for Janet?
Well, the question was 82,000. Is the answer that you kind of said yes, that's enough to buy the land? Or no, that's really not enough in Edina to do it once a year? And so...
It is when I bring matching funds to it. And I bring matching funds of anywhere from $70,000 to $90,000. So typically, Homes Within Reach goes out and raises funds, and we've done that with all the other communities that we work with, is we bring matching funds. If we didn't have those matching funds, we couldn't do it. Because average land costs that we've experienced, about 132,000.
So matching funds, is there a vehicle in Edina that we can talk about that has given you matching funds before? That is our community-based vehicle to help you match funds? Or are you going outside of our community?
We're going outside the community. We have talked to the Edina Foundation, and years, several years ago, they helped with parts of the financing piece for our homeowners. That hasn't taken place in the last couple of years. But all the other matching funds have either been Hennepin County HRA, some more federal funds, state local funds, some private funds from churches outside of the Edina community.
Did you mean the Edina Housing Foundation?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
All right. And have you had any recent conversations with them about this?
No, I have not done a follow-up the last couple of years with them.
You might want to check back in with them.
It's time.
Yeah, I think it would be, especially on the rehabilitation portion of it. They might be able to give you some assistance.
That'd be fabulous.
It'd be a nice partnership, I think.
Oh, it would.
All right.
And we have a board member who also participates on that group, so I really should follow up.
Now, on Monday, I was at a Regional Council of Mayors meeting, Monday noon, and Terry Schneider, the mayor of Minnetonka, came up and told me that you have a fundraiser that you're going to be doing in Edina, but covering the West Metro, basically, your area of operation on May, if memory serves me right, May 23rd?
May 23rd. It's our first fundraiser. It's really our first endeavor to go out and really do some private fundraising. It's going to be at Centennial Lakes, and it begins at 5:00, and there'll be a silent auction, a live auction. So I will send more information as the time, and I believe you are all on the mailing list. And plus, I can keep the information with Joyce so she can share it and help us also disseminate that information.
All right, good. Well, we'll all try to be there, but we have competing schedules, but we'll do our best. And I've already told Terry I would, I think, host it with him or...
Yes, yes, yes.
Is this something also as a city that we can help broadcast, Jennifer, this event? And in any way, is there any limit to what we can broadcast or not?
We can, we can look into details for that. Sometimes it's difficult to film off-location at a venue like Centennial Lakes, is where she said it.
Actually, I'm not asking you to film it. I'm asking you to talk about the event ahead of time and the date and what it is.
Yes, we can do that.
That would be the advertising part of it or the marketing part of it?
Yes, we can do that.
And I can give you a nice story.
Sorry, I...
Pick and pull information. I can give you some really good information to help you with that as well.
We'd be happy to help.
And also, anytime that we can put anything in the local newspapers and so on, a little story on the land trust and on the fundraising would be fabulous also. If you could guide me or direct me, I'd appreciate it greatly.
And I think, you've probably thought of this already, but I think having the folks, Edina that have purchased homes from you at this event would be a good idea.
Well, we hope all our homeowners show up to be very, there's 80 of them, but we hope a good share of them. We've had, over the last 10 years, 80 new homeowners, and it's been very, very successful.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks, Janet.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Yes, come up, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Beth Codleboy. I'm the director of HomeLine. Been here before a number of years. But what HomeLine does is we provide tenant advocacy services through a tenant services hotline. Managers call in if they have questions about their rights and responsibilities, and we're able to walk them through the process of whatever problem they're having. The idea is to give tenants the tools they need to solve the problem themselves. Last year, not surprisingly with the economy, we had a record number of calls from Edina families. 112 families called our hotline last year. 22 of these families were what I call very critical situations, where the landlord was in foreclosure or they were facing immediate eviction. So pretty heavy issues last year. Hopefully, it'll be turning the corner soon for a lot of these folks, and we won't be getting that kind of volume. But that's what we were looking at last year. The other thing we do is provide high school renter education, and I welcome your participation in getting teachers to take us into their classrooms. That's a real hard thing to do. Every year, we send information out to the high schools. And if we lose contact with those teachers, we've had contacts with, unfortunately, the teacher we had a really good contact with in Edina moved to Buffalo, and now we're doing stuff out in Buffalo. So anything you can do to make those connections is great, especially with the kids who are about to graduate or in independent living classes. That's really the audience that we're looking for because they seem to listen a lot better. The other thing I'd like to add is that one of the things that HomeLine's doing to raise money for ourselves is we put together a tenant rights book that's going to be coming out late March. And it's a very comprehensive book that's written for people who are renting, for social service providers who have a lot of renters who are going through issues. And for any folks that wants to know what their rights are, it's based on the calls we've been getting for the last 20 years, addresses current issues like landlord foreclosure, how do you deal with it? And it walks you through the whole process. So if you're interested in knowing more about that, it's, there's a whole lot of information on our website at HomeLineMN.org. And just want to give out our tenant hotline number, if there's any renters out there listening. The hotline phone number is (612) 728-5767.
Questions for Beth? All right. Thank you.
So, wait, I think you, what is the class they usually teach senior year that this, it should be, you know, how not to have a credit card that you overuse? And that class, what is that called?
It varies from school to school. Sometimes it's a basic finance class, sometimes it's, you know, but the independent living classes are the ones where we see a lot of students who are, either some of them are already in rental situations and some of them are, you know, facing being on their own pretty quick.
Okay, thanks.
You bet.
Couple of questions.
Beth, hold on.
Sure.
The marketing to the high school students is great. As Councilmember Swenson points out, sometimes that student isn't ready to rent until they've perhaps been in school for a couple of years. Do you have any way of marketing or reaching people who may be in that situation? And what is your general marketing approach? The phone number is great. How else do people hear about you?
One of the things that we've, just so you know how people get referred to us, about a third of our calls come from the Attorney General's office. They can give basic information, but they can't really tell people how to proceed and solve a situation for themselves. Emergency programs in the community obviously give us a lot of referrals, as well as the city and some social workers who are out there who know about our work. The other thing that's, we've had more and more presence is we put a lot of our information and the court forms and things that people need to fill out on our website, and we track that. And that usage is getting pretty high, and I think a lot of, sort of the tech savvy younger generation is really looking at that, and maybe not even calling us, so we can't really tell where they're calling from. But we can tell that there's been a huge increase. I think we get over 7,000 hits a month. Over 4,000 forums are downloaded every three months. So we know that a lot of people are using that resource too. So the website has a lot of information on it.
Great.
Other questions for Beth? All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and comment or inquire regarding this proposed Seeing no one coming forward, hearing nothing, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moves in second that we close the public hearing? Discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried? And do we have a motion or any council comment?
I would move approval of the Community Development Block Grant for 2011.
I will second with gratitude for the services that are being provided.
Thank you. Any other comments by council members?
I just know a couple of people who have been helped by agencies who are here tonight and included in this, in this item, and really appreciate what you've been able to do for them.
Okay. All those in favor of the proposed allocations for the 2011 Community Development Block Grant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Thank you. Thanks, folks, for coming this evening. Always appreciate your input. Next matter before us is the Resolution 2011-32, accepting various donations. Is there a motion?
So, second?
Moves in second that we adopt Resolution 2011-32 regarding donations. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Donations this reporting period are to the Edina Arts Center and the Edina Heritage Preservation Board. And those donors' names will be listed on the website within a few days, so you can pick up that information there. Next matter is the appointments to boards and commissions. Again, the council has done some extensive work, I think, just a great slate of candidates. I really like the newer technique that we use with the entire council interviews candidates so we understand well, trying to align candidates with the places they would serve most effectively. We have made some decisions, and they are encompassed in this particular resolution or matter, Agenda Item 3C. I'll read the proposed appointments, move them, and then someone else can second them, and then we'll have a discussion and vote on them. Arts Center Board, Dana Lappin, and that would be for a position expiring February 1, 2012. Board of Appeals and Equalization, we had one position left to fill there. Jeff Johnson has agreed to come back on. That would be through February 1, 2012. Edina Community Health Committee, two appointments, Julie Melham through 2/112, Mary Ellen Lovell through 2/112. Heritage Preservation Board, David Anger, who would be serving until February 1 of 2013. Gene Recamp Larson coming back on the board, and Bob Schwartzbach coming back on the board with terms expiring February 1, 2012. Human Rights and Relations Commission, one appointment, proposed appointment. Steve Winnick, February 1, 2013, would be the expiration of his term. Park Board, two appointments, David Deeds, February 1, 2014, and Bill Lau, February 1, 2012. And Edina Transportation Commission, two appointments, Nathan Franzen, 2/113, and Anne Braden, February 1, 2014. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments by council members about the process or the candidates?
I thought the process went really well, and we ended up with the right people for the strategic needs of each commission. I think it was a good matching process.
Good. Member Bennett?
I am in awe of all the talent and passion that are in the community and grateful that we have these opportunities for people to serve.
I think the other thing that's important to realize is that we had over 60 people apply for just over 20 positions. So we had some really super-great Edina residents that we couldn't fill into a spot. And we tried to tell everyone as they left that if they didn't get it this time around, don't, not reapply. So I wanted to just say thank you for everyone who showed up.
Good. Member Lindell?
And I want to thank Member Bennett because about a year ago, we were talking about this process, and she was unrelenting at having all of us interview everybody. And that had not been done before, in my recollection. As having served on several commissions, it would be a conversation either on the phone or in person with the mayor, with the applications in front of us, and we would look at talents we were looking for. And so it would be the chair of the commission and the mayor. And therefore, and we got great talent. But to, as a council member, be able to just have conversations with these people and realize the depth of interest that we have in our community and the wealth of talent and just great people. And I think in some cases, we found ways that we thought, ooh, we want that on that commission because there's a direction we would be able to go because of that person. So I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you. This has been evolutionary. I know when I first became mayor, I would sit with the chairs of the prospective boards or commissions interviewing people, and frankly, I'd get kind of worn out. And so I really like having my colleagues with me now and appreciate the method that we use. So, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And we pulled the traffic safety report. Member Swenson had a concern there or a comment?
Yeah, I talked to Wayne Hoole earlier before the meeting. The one area of study that they did was Our Lady of Grace, and they weren't quite prepared to make a change. But what we kind of talked about a little more, he's willing to go back to the school and see if there's a way that maybe we can double stack within the school lot so that it doesn't affect the street. So I would move approval of everything except the OLG part of it. And you can report back later.
I will second.
Okay.
All right. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. We are now into the community comment portion of the agenda, having completed the reports and recommendations section. Is there anyone in our community that wishes to come up and comment regarding a matter of concern to them? Yes, ma'am. And you'll have three minutes.
I don't need three minutes. Thank you very much. My name is Susan Kovnik, 4715 Golf Terrace. I just wanted to point out in your packet, I believe you all will see the copy of the letter from Mr. Sullivan. And we are, just to give you an update verbally, that we are having a meeting next Tuesday at a neighborhood meeting with Public Works. Some of us had an opportunity to attend an excellent workshop on stormwater management, and some of you were there. It was wonderful. I just want to come up here tonight, don't want to take any more of your time, because you've all spent a lot of time on this and there's more time to spend on it. But I do want to just tell you, give you a sneak preview of the letter, and the sneak preview is disappointment. We feel there's three concerns, the quality of Lake Harvey, the safety on the roadway around Lake Harvey, and the aesthetics to a very fine and premier Edina neighborhood. And none of the proposals that we've seen so far of the three options given seem to meet those needs, in our opinion. And I want to direct you to the second to the last paragraph. Other options considered were rain guards, stormwater treatment devices, previous payment and dredging of the lake. These options were analyzed and discussed and were determined not to be feasible. Those are probably the options we were hoping to really look into. And that's a disappointment. And the third to the last paragraph, Mr. Sullivan makes reference that they'll have to work with the contractor to do minor grading behind the curb to match the existing elevation. That's what we've been trying to tell you all along. It's perfectly flat. They're going to be disturbing the little bit of buffer that we have, and they're talking about adding to it.
All right, Mrs. Kovnik, we're going to deal with this matter, and, you know, set for a hearing on the 15th of March. Really, under community comment, it probably wasn't appropriate for you since it was scheduled for a future hearing already. But we'll take your comments, and there's a long way to go yet before we make a decision. And we thank you for coming over tonight.
Okay. I didn't know that was exactly the procedure.
That's all right. Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jean Persha, 6917 Cornelia Drive. I would like to propose several things about how we name civic places in Edina. Because of how some names were applied on municipal property over a number of years, and the suddenness and the lack of public input, as well as this issue coming up with the park board several times recently, I would like to recommend some steps to take to improve the process. First, we should have a citizen group work with the park board to discuss a possible naming policy, as this issue has come up several times. Secondly, this group should meet no more than possibly three times, with co-chairs, maybe one from the park board, one from citizen members. And then all residents and all members of this body, or anybody that's affiliated with our city of Edina, can come forward and either give testimony or give comments about how or what we should name things after. It is important all residents have a chance to participate and to comment equally. There will duly noted and hopefully prioritize also recommendations and possible steps to take when names or the naming process needs to be invoked. If one looks at this process as I have, and with our neighboring suburbs and some good examples out of state, and I have three very good states that I've recently been in, West Virginia, Pennsylvania, and California, taking a look at how names are put on civic places, it would be fully advantageous to take a look at the implications of how things are named and whether names should be even changed. Our broad citizenry needs to be involved with the process. This can generate some very good ideas. I ask your support for such an endeavor.
All right. Mr. Persha, would you put your thoughts to pen or to email and send them into City Hall? And then we'll talk about letting the park board take a look at it. We'll have to make a decision on that.
Yes. I want to just emphasize something, though. This is not just the park board. The park board has been involved with us in a couple major ways.
All right.
There's some other things that play into it just as equally as this.
All right.
So I want to be sure it's just not a park board. And I suggest the park board as the, might say, board or commission, but that there's an adjunct group that can be working with the park board with them.
Why don't you send it to the city council, then? And we'll figure out what to do with your suggestion. All right? Member Swenson?
And your timing is good because on the park board's agenda is to relook at their policy for putting names and taking things as donations, et cetera, just from a bench on up right now. So your timing is great for relooking at the policy as a whole. So I know that they're at least starting with a piece of what you're talking about.
Yeah. It's been very interesting looking at this in our neighboring suburbs, by the way. It's really, really interesting. So I think it's some good things to come from it.
Yeah, good. And I think if you have any resource material you can send along with your...
No, I'm going to save my... I have some real good stuff, as far as I'm concerned. But I'm going to save that if this comes to take part. Because what I don't want to happen is that the citizens, as an adjunct group, be in a subordinate role. I see them as a co-partner with the park board or whatever other group you want to put. But I don't want the citizenry to play a lesser role because they're not in a board or a commission. And one of the things I have suggested, and I think Mrs. Swenson brought up, we have lots of good citizens. We can put them to work in some committees that don't necessarily have to be boards or commissions, but they can be tangentially associated with things such as the park or where this issue has come up.
All right. Fine. To the extent you have thoughts or resource material that you want to share with the councils, please send it in.
Yeah. Well, as I said, I'm going to hold off all my specifics, other than my general topics.
All right.
Mr. Persha, we have working groups on some of our commissions that anyone can apply to. You don't have to be a commission member. That might be a model you can use. It's not purely commission members. It's at-large membership as well. So that may be one possibility.
Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else? No finance matters, correspondence and petitions, anything else? Manager Neil, isn't what we've received on the dice? All right. Council comments, Member Brindle?
I just have one, and it goes back to the item 3E tonight. The traffic safety report in discussing the request for a crosswalk at 56th and Xerxes. And the comment here by the county, the county traffic operations engineer replied to the request as follows, "This intersection is an all-way stop, thus a legal crosswalk already exists, and all vehicles already have to stop." Well, I can name at least one other four-way stop where there is a crosswalk. So I don't understand why a crosswalk would not be allowable here.
Half that intersection is Minneapolis, half is us.
Well, it doesn't matter. I mean, it's all Hennepin County. It's all Hennepin County. So I guess I don't understand this comment. If the allowability, looking at walkability, getting people across the street safely, looking at the allowability of a crosswalk at a four-way stop, it's inconsistent. The reasoning is inconsistent to me. And whether we put one at 56th and Xerxes now or not, I'd like to know why it's accepted at another intersection, which is a county road on Gleason, Gleason and Indian Hills, why it's allowable there if it's not allowable at 56th and Xerxes.
Good. Anything else? Member Bennett?
Thank you. I have a couple of requests. We spoke earlier this evening about a work session with board and commission chairs, and I think we'll be looking forward to seeing that on the calendar. There is, I think, some work proceeding on model bylaws for boards and commissions, and that might be a good topic for that meeting. I would also like to suggest a work session topic on neighborhood organizing or neighborhood organizations. I think from a public safety perspective, Neighborhood Watch and the like, from a communications perspective, and from a signage perspective, and probably others I can't contemplate here, I think it would be very helpful for us to have a work session and look and see what we, as a community, can and should be doing. And finally, after hearing Member Brindle's question and comment, I have a reminder that's occurred to me recently, and it is, there is, I think, much higher levels of driver education in other states. Because there are states where drivers seem to know that you don't just stop for pedestrians where you have a stop sign or a stop light. You stop for them at intersections. And so I would like to remind our drivers and our pedestrians that as we're going into these longer and warmer days and more people are walking, stopping for a pedestrian who's on a corner is not just a good or nice thing to do, it's the right and legal thing to do. And if we're all looking out for each other, we'll all go forward safely.
I have a bit of a follow-on to that, which...
Go ahead.
...is not going to be the most tactfully stated comment. And that is that a stop sign does not mean step on the gas and get through this stop sign quickly. And it just, I mean, we really have to respect one another more than that. So I hope we will kind of slow down a little bit and realize that they're there for a reason.
Very good. Thank you. Member Swenson?
We got a letter from Dean Rose that was just asking about the differences in funding for street projects, and I just wanted to know. She asked, "I look forward to your response." Did we respond to it, either Scott or you? Or can I just pass this down to you, Wayne, so I can make sure that someone did respond to her? I didn't feel qualified because I don't do the pricing for streets, so I just felt it would be better if somebody else did. And then I had one quick question that I should have asked. I should have, Carrie, pulled the livable communities grant. But I just, how far will this grant go in doing the rehab work that's mentioned? Windows, doors, cupboards, foundation stoops? I mean, that could be one unit with that. So...
Yeah. Councilmember Swenson, from what I understand, this is only a small fraction of the total cost.
Right.
They've raised, up to this point, around $1 million. I think that the total rehab costs are going to far exceed $1 million.
So, and when will the work start, based on the monies that they have in pocket to date? Do you know? Have they pulled a permit for any of it?
They have not pulled any permits yet. They would like to get started toward the end of this year.
Okay. That'd be great. I think that's it. Thanks.
Member Sprague?
Thank you.
I'm just going to continue my community calendar function here. One thing I wanted to report on was that I'm just so amazed by the private sector's support for families and children and youth in Edina. It's an amazing place. I'd say the number-one place in the world to raise a family. I'm going to declare that here. But at the Edina Family Center Gala, which is every other year, they raised $51,000 to help support the early childhood family education programs and scholarships and various other things. It's just amazing to me, one night, that they could raise that. The Edina Ed Fund Luncheon brought in $120,000 to support innovation in our schools. Another amazing figure. Just reflects the incredible generosity. Not only do we have talented people, we have extremely generous philanthropic people in the community. Upcoming, on February 18, there's a Countryside Hunger Event that a few of us will be at, from 12:30 to 1:30 at Countryside Schools. So if you're out there in TV land and you'd like to go do a little community service for an hour, come join us. February 24, we have, it's 7:30 to 8:30 a.m. at Braymar, we have the Connecting with Kids Awards Banquet. Again, some of us will be there, if not all of us. It's a breakfast. And then Friday, February 28, Cornelia Elementary School is having a Snow Fest from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. It's a family event. Anyone's welcome to come. You don't have to just be from the area. So a lot of great opportunities there to get involved and support our families. And then I wanted to follow up on Member Bennett talking about neighborhood organizing and so on, basically communications. I'm going to take it a different direction. In the Legal Women's Voters Study, one of the recommendations was that we have a Communications Advisory Task Force. And at some point, I would like to take that up in work session, perhaps with the community engagement piece that Member Bennett was talking about, and try to get this task force pulled together and start to make some headway on having citizen-led body to advise us on content and delivery and overall strategic direction of our communications facility. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. From my schedule since the last meeting two weeks ago, following our meeting on February 1, and the 2nd of February, we had a Southwest LRT Community Works Meeting, continuing to work on vision and mission. It's a very good working group, composed of cities along the proposed Southwest LRT line. Some concerns, of course, about federal funding arising. We're very close to being able to enter into preliminary engineering, and I think there's still a strong level of optimism that this line will be built. So the Southwest LRT Community Works Committee is kind of overseeing the connection between land use and transportation and looking at how communities along the line, stations along the line ought to be developed. And I think it's going to be a quite fascinating piece of work as we proceed. On the 4th of February, Member Sprague and I met with Chair of the Edina Transportation Commission for breakfast, Jennifer Janovi, and discussed some of the transportation issues that are potentially affecting our community and looking at some potential strategies for work by the Transportation Commission. Enjoyed that meeting. And then on the 8th of February, I went over to a meeting with Bloomington and Richfield to meet with the new State Health Commissioner, Dr. Ed Ellinger, to talk about ship funding and what a benefit the ship funding has been to our three communities. And I noticed the governor had about $20 million for ship in his budget that was released today, which was good news. On March 1, we're going to have Melissa Madison here from the 494 Commuter Services. She gave a report to us on the 9th of February that just had tremendous content to it. The work of commuter services, and she'll report on this in more detail, has resulted in about $18 million fewer single-occupant vehicle miles being driven in 2010. So there'll be detail on that report coming here on the 1st of March. And then I had a delightful experience on the 10th of February, and I'm going to mention this, maybe she watches our local cable access. Elsie Mitchell moved to our town when she was 90 years old from California, and went over to Fairview-Southdale and volunteered to help out and push people in wheelchairs. And she said, "Don't turn me down. I can push people to their cars and help them to their cars." Her niece advised the hospital that they ought to pay attention to what Elsie was saying, and they asked her to be a volunteer. She turned 100 on the 10th of February. I proclaimed that Elsie Mitchell Day in Edina. Went over to fete her a bit at the hospital, and it turns out that Elsie, in her work as a volunteer, had seen some of the things that were needed over there in terms of a meditation center, had funded the meditation center. And as she spoke that morning, she gave the foundation another check, a significant amount of money at the hospital, and gave Brad Beard some money for the hospital operations, and then wanted to sit on the podium and hold hands with me. So I said, "Yes, I will do that. No question about it. I'll let my wife know that I've held hands today with a centenarian." And when she got all done giving them a check, she turned to me and she said, "Mayor, that was lovely." So it was a really enjoyable morning, and the crowd that was there got a good kick out of it. On the 10th of February at night, we had the 169 Corridor Coalition Meeting. No detailed offer there. We just continue our work of figuring out how to prioritize projects along the corridor. Are we having a presentation from the project manager at 169 494, is that? We had talked about that, having him come in and give us an update. They've started construction out there. Yeah. We don't have that calendared yet. Okay. Maybe we ought to put it on for March 1st, given the other... March 1st, make it transportation night. Transportation night, right? Yeah. I think his name is Michael Bear, B-E-E-R, I believe. And, let's see, then on the 14th, had the Healthy Community Initiative Meeting that we attended with Richfield, Bloomington. We're working on some common strategies for improving people's lives in our three communities, and we're kind of at the front end of that work. And then the Regional Council of Mayors met on Monday noon as well. And then I got news today that, I think I mentioned last meeting, that there was a delegation coming from the Kingdom of Bahrain that was interested in economic development opportunities with the Twin Cities region that I had worked on. And they've all been called home now. They were in Phoenix, and the King has called them home because of the unrest in Bahrain. So they are not coming into Minneapolis tomorrow. And so there's been a lot of work done. It's been postponed, not canceled, so they will be back. And it looks like we've got some interesting opportunities for companies here to expand into the Gulf region, and also for companies here to maybe get some investment from some of the Bahraini funds. So they will be back, and that's been part of my last two weeks. I just wanted to mention quickly that on the consent agenda tonight, we had two grants to the fire department. One was for $46,800 to allow us to purchase what are called the Jaws of Life hydraulic rescue tools. And then also, we approved a resolution where we secured $76,000, almost $76,500, through a Homeland Security Grant for planning, training, equipment, and exercise purposes. So congratulations to Chief Shearer on that.
I called the fire department today to inquire about... I called the fire department today to inquire about the grant for the Jaws of Life. I said, "Is this a replacement or is this a new one?" And the gentleman I spoke with told me that it's a new one because there's new technology. Some of the foreign cars that are being driven have maybe a tougher metal or a different kind of metal that is tougher to cut through with the old set, and so they needed this new set. So that's what that's for.
Good. Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got a number of things. First thing I want to tell you about is something I mentioned in my Friday Report last week, and that's Susie Miller. Can you, do we have Susie? Or should I go on to another thing, Jennifer?
All right. Last week, we'll skip Susie's thing and we'll come, we'll come back to it. Last week, I spent a little bit of time working with Parks and Rec staff on figuring out how much it would cost us to, to extend our outdoor ice rink season. And we, we figured out that we could extend the season for about $3,000 bucks for two weeks for four rinks. And if I'd known that putting that much energy into figuring that out would cause the temperature to rise and be nice outside, I'd have done that three months ago. So all that, it appears, is for naught as the ice is rapidly melting, and, and no one's complaining about that. March 1st, the mayor already referenced is shaping up to be a heavy transportation meeting night. We have Dave Christensen coming from MDOT to talk about rail issues, and Melissa Madison coming from 494 Commuter Services to talk about her work as well. On the screen, I just saw, come on. That is.
That was.
That is. That's Susie Miller, and Susie is the Assistant Manager at Edinburgh. And Susie was selected by CARE 11 TV as one of the 11 Who Care. It's a.
Oh, fantastic.
Program that they, they do every year to represent, to acknowledge and recognize people that have made significant voluntary sector contributions in the Twin Cities. We're very proud of Susie. She, her contribution is that she helped establish something called Minnesota Special Hockey, which is a hockey league for kids with disabilities. And you can see her, her work at mn specialhockey.org is, is the website. But Susie will get recognition by CARE 11 soon. Assess valuations. You, you must be getting calls and comments from people wondering about their valuations. Well, if, you, you will. I can almost promise you. But I just wanted to give you an idea about what that timeframe is on, on that. You know, our, our staff has completed their work, their valuation work, and they send their work off to the county. Hennepin County, they sent it off a couple of weeks ago. Hennepin County has to validate it, and they're in the process of doing that. We, we believe we'll hear from them next week, maybe as late, or maybe as early as the end of this week, that that, that our, that our work is okay, it's validated, and the statistical runs they run on it all work and work in our favor, make sure it's accurate, et cetera. Following that, then there is the, the letters of valuation notices do go out, and that's probably when you'll start hearing from people. We like to work out as many of those informally from, from property owner to staff as possible. So if you want to encourage them to make a contact with our, our assessing division staff, that would be great. If we can't work things out through that process, there is a formal process, and it begins with the submission of the official form, and, and the letter they will receive gives direction on how to submit that form. But the deadline to submit that form is April 1st, so nobody has missed a deadline up to this point. The, the local Board of Appeal and Equalization, the first meeting is April 11th. The final meeting is April 25th. If someone, if a property owner is still unsatisfied with how they feel their outcome came out, the next step is the county, and they have a similar process. It gets a little more rigid and, and legalistic from that point on, but that is the, that is the next step in that process. Next subject I have is about how we teleca, when we, when we put our boards and commissions on camera and off camera for their meetings. We have, you, you looked at this as a council, we think, four or five years ago, but there has, we've been getting requests and questions from our boards and commissions about when, when they can vary from the existing practices and policy, because there's some, there's some desire to do so occasionally. I think it would be good if, if we could take this subject up again with the council and see where, see where you stand on it. What I'm suggesting is that we use the month of March to formally seek some comments from boards and commissions about what they would like you to know about their needs of being on camera and off camera, and that we staff aggregate that, that information and present you a proposed policy at your April 19th meeting. You could consider it that night or, or consider it at a later meeting, but that'll be our self-imposed deadline. If that works for you, that's what we'll plan to do. The Flow Rider, at our la, at our, our meeting with the Parks, Parks Board, there was a question about why aren't we going to bid with the Flow Rider? And we, we've, we had a discussion with the staff, and we are going to go to bid for the Flow Rider. So the project is essentially ready for a bid, and we'll take it to bid this spring. We are working still on the golf course.
Scott?
Yes?
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome.
Joey and I have some merit.
We expect you to use it now if we put it out there, so.
But thank you.
Okay.
Baby steps.
Baby steps. We are working on the golf course operations and maintenance RFP, and I have, I met with the Chair of the Parks Commission for Breakfast and got his ideas on that. Where the processes we discussed at that last meeting was that we would produce a draft RFP. We would bring that to the Parks Commission, get their comment, and ultimately their blessing on it before we take it out. Finally, City Hall is closed on Monday, February 21st, for President's Day. And that's all I have in my report. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Did that prompt anything from any other, any of the council members?
And our meeting next, the 1st, is, do we have a 5 o'clock with? Can I?
We do. We have a joint meeting with the ETC.
ETC. Okay. And the 15th, do we have anything scheduled yet?
We do. Seal, what did we decide? We. 15th of March. We do. Right.
Thank you. I just kind of like to know ahead of time.
Yep. Oh.
Yeah, but it's not in my calendar, so I miss putting those two things together.
And we do have that joint meeting with the school board coming up on February 28th.
That's right.
And that will be held at 5, from 5 to 6 p.m. Do we know where yet?
We, we do know it will be at the community center, the community center.
Third floor, one of those rooms.
I think so.
Okay.
When I look at the schedule of upcoming meetings, I look at the 5th of April. I thought that's when we were going to do some economic development or some, there was another matter that we had scheduled for a work session, other than review of city enterprise business plans, as I understood it.
There, there is, on, on that date, there is some fluidity to the subject matter of that work session and actually the council meeting agenda that night. There is. That's more of a placeholder. That could slip back to the 9, the, excuse me, the 18th or the 19th? Which would it be? 19?
Okay. And just so you know ahead of time, I will not be here on that 5th meeting.
And then it was good to finally see that announcement from Simon Properties on adding in Herberger's, I think, getting that space filled after seven years, and having a tenant take 132,000 square feet was a good thing. And they're good operators. We welcome them in here. And we'll have some things to discuss relative to Southdale and some requests by Simon at one of our upcoming meetings.
Yes, we will.
Which is pretty interesting. So, anything else? All right. We, we stand adjourned.